Okay, in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act PL 1975, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this regular meeting of the Planning Board of the Township of Franklin has been provided. If everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty.
Councilman Chase.
Carl Hauck.
Here.
Alex Karazi.
Cecile McIver.
Here.
Robert Mettler. Mustafa Mansray. Charles Brown.
Here.
Robert Thomas.
Here.
Jennifer Ragnow had offered an excuse not to be here tonight. Godwin Amalola. And Chairman Orsini.
Here.
So just quickly administratively, if anyone is here for Sudia or Victory Subaru, those are carried to July 11th, 2018 with no further notification required. Okay, that being said, I'll entertain a motion for the minutes for the regular meeting of May 16.
Move to approve.
Carl Hauck.
Yes.
Alex Karazi. Cecile McIver.
Yes.
Robert Mettler.
Yes.
Charles Brown.
Yes.
Godwin Amalola. And Chairman Orsini.
Yes. Godwin, can you turn your mic on? I think you pressed the button. Yeah. Okay. Resolutions, we have Brian K., PL 14-00016.
Move to approve.
And recall that with this approval is denying.
That's correct.
Yep.
Okay. Carl Hauck.
Yes.
Cecile McIver.
Yes.
Robert Mettler.
Yes.
Robert Thomas.
Yes.
And Chairman Orsini.
Yes. Discussion, do we have anything marked?
No.
Okay. Entertain a motion to open the meetings to the public for anything that is not a subject of a hearing tonight.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody from the public wishing to come forward on a hearing that is, on a matter that is not the subject of its own hearing tonight?
Seeing no one coming forward, I would move that this public portion be closed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move on to our one and only hearing tonight, which is Bridge Acquisitions LLC, PL N 18-00007. There you go.
For the third time.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Peter Lanford appearing on behalf of the applicant. I am here this evening on behalf of Bridge Acquisitions LLC, who is the applicant for the development of three parcels of land at the intersection of Weston Canal and Randolph. When we submitted the application, they were the applicant. There were owners of the parcels, separate owners of the parcels involved. As of today, my client has closed and is also the owner of all of these properties. Last evening, I was at the Historic Commission where Mr. Chase reminded us that this application or this site has been the subject of numerous applications, and actually, they date back to 2003 when there was an application on approximately 70 acres for the Jane Enterprises for 915,000 square feet of warehouse space. In 2011, there was an application for a status center totaling 1,500,000 square feet of space, again, on 70 acres plus or minus. In 2013, there were two 462,000 square foot warehouses proposed, again, on about 70 acres. And in 2014, there were 20 office warehouses that were proposed and approved by this board, totaling about 747,000 square feet. Ironically, in all of those applications, the parcel that was involved was the 70-acre parcel that fronted on Weston Canal Road. During the time that we went through those applications, both the county, your staff, and even the board says, why don't you guys buy the parcel at the corner so we can get access out to Randolph Road? All of the prior owners were never able to accomplish that. This applicant has now acquired that parcel, so while Dr. Chase said it was the same application, it's really a little bit different because we went from 70 acres to now roughly 120-some acres, which are the subject of this application. The application tonight is to construct three buildings totaling about 1,700,000 square feet of space. I do have four witnesses this evening. I have our architect, a representative of the owner, our site engineer, and our traffic consultant. There are a few variances that we will be seeking, and we'll discuss those as we go through the testimony. Most of that will be by our site engineer, who is also a licensed professional planner. With that background, I would like to call John Porsec as my first witness.
Microphone work? There you go. Good.
Where, Mr. Porsec, in?
Sure. Mr. Porsec, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as hell?
I do.
Mr. Porsec, by whom are you employed?
I am employed by Bridge Development Partners.
And are you a principal of the company?
I am.
Okay. And can you briefly tell the board what Bridge Development Partners is and does?
Sure. First off, I am Executive Vice President and Principal of Bridge Development Partners. I have been in Bridge for three and a half years. And first, I just want to mention too, we're going to respect the board's time this evening. We're going to look for our presentations to be concise and informative, and obviously we respect the board's time. General overview of Bridge Development Partners. Bridge has been around since 2000. We have offices in New Jersey, Miami, Chicago, LA, and Seattle. In New Jersey, we have constructed 3.5 million square foot of industrial space so far. We have another 7 million square foot in our pipeline now. And Bridge nationally has constructed 18 million square foot of industrial. With regards to what we build, we strictly build industrial. We don't build any other type of assets, you know, office, et cetera. We're focused on Class A industrial assets. A little bit more about myself. Prior to being with Bridge, I was with Heller Construction Company, and I don't know if there's any members on the board that know Heller, but Heller has been in Franklin for approximately 40 years, built and developed a number of buildings. I believe we were always good neighbors at Heller, and Heller still owns buildings there today, and Heller owns 16 million square foot of industrial assets nationwide.
Mr. Porsec, can you briefly tell the board what your vision is for this project?
Sure. First off, I guess the first question would be, why Franklin, and then why this site? Number one, I know my experience in Franklin has always been, it's been a great municipality to do business with. We always felt the professionals, the people there were very courteous and understood that success on projects is a good public and private partnership. This particular site, we think it's a great site. It's on the corner of Weston Canal and Randolph Road. It's got great access to local roadways. You know, it's zoned M1, it's zoned industrial. From the standpoint of the site itself, we've laid the site out, we feel to be a very effective layout with three industrial buildings on the site. As Peter had mentioned, we've combined parcels there because we felt that was very effective to be able to combine the two parcels and have access both of Randolph and Weston Canal. So the three buildings we have laid out on the site, there are three facilities. One is 1,65,615 square feet. There are two other facilities that are 308,550 square feet. These buildings will be built on spec. They may either be single tenant buildings, they may be multi-tenant buildings, but the one common thread would be is we'd be seeking tenants that would be reputable, financially stable, and be good neighbors to the Franklin Township.
And in operating this warehouse operation, will you be catering to any tenants to deal with any chemicals of any kind?
No. One of the things we don't is we don't allow tenants to our buildings to store hazardous materials. That's one thing that we do not do.
And just for the record, as of this date, do you have any confirmed tenants or users for any of the buildings?
No, we do not.
Okay, thank you. I have no further questions of this witness, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions from the board for this witness? Okay, you remain sworn in if any comes up.
Testing the mic.
Yes. Good. Rob, you may want to pull that mic out so it may be easier for you to work.
Yeah, that's perfect. Oh, sorry about that. Just wanted to get set up a little bit here.
Would you just state your name for the record?
Robert Frude, F as in Frank, R, E U D.
Thank you. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give, this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as hell?
Yes, I do.
Mr. Frude, what is your occupation?
I'm a professional engineer, civil engineer with Dynamic Engineering. I'm a principal with the firm.
And you're licensed in the state of New Jersey?
I am, yes.
And how long have you been so licensed?
Nearly 20 years.
He's accepted.
Thank you. Mr. Frude, in presenting your testimony this evening, you will be relying on some exhibits, is that correct?
Yes, I will.
And perhaps rather than stop as we get to each exhibit, maybe we should mark them at this time? And I guess you're going to start with the exhibit right there.
On the left.
And can we mark that as A1? And can you indicate to Mr. Vignolo what A1 is?
Sure. A1, and I've dated it today, 6618, is entitled aerial exhibit. It is a aerial image of the property outlined with the property and road names identified on the exhibit.
Single sheet document?
Single sheet, yes.
A2, Mr. Frude.
A2 is an overall site plan rendering. It is a color rendered version of the site plan with the landscaping superimposed. Single sheet.
All right. And A3 will be?
A3 is a DRCC line of sight and profile exhibit.
Also one sheet?
Also one sheet, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Frude, you have reduced versions of those exhibits in color that we can hand out to the board members?
I do for A2 and 3.
Correct.
A1 is a color version of Sheet 2, as the site plan said.
So Peter, before you begin, just a little guidance for you and your witnesses. Please try to focus on anything that's in the staff reports, more than anything. And, you know, I don't think we need a huge description of, I mean, it's a warehouse, you don't even know who's going to win it. Maybe a little bit on architecturals, but I don't know there's too much architecture in a warehouse, and...
My architect will be insulted by that comment, but...
Sorry. No offense intended, but a warehouse is a warehouse, and when it's a million square feet, I don't know that there's too much you can do to it. But at any rate...
I will try to give the board the Reader's Digest versions of this presentation, and I understand the board's concerns, and I will get to the pertinent issues that you're concerned about, but I do think I need to just get a little background.
Of course.
Okay. Mr. Frude, can you indicate, based on A1, what are the existing conditions at the subject property, and also what are the surrounding land uses?
Certainly. And I recognize that the board has seen applications on this property, at least a portion of this for many years, but there's a couple of things that have changed with the additional properties and are also important relative to the application. I guess first and foremost, A1, again, is a color aerial image of the property. North is at the top of the page, and the property in question is in the center of page. For the record, the lot is 7.02, 7.03, and 11.01 in Block 56.01. It is, again, bordered on the north by Weston Canal Road and on the east by Randolph Road, and that was one of the significant changes with this application, is two properties were added, one giving us the frontage and access on Randolph Road, and the other a portion in the northwest corner, which provides additional space along the property. What you see, again, surrounding area, north of the property, as you're well aware from previous applications, the canal is just on the opposite side of Weston Canal Road, and ultimately, the Raritan River and Bridgewater Township beyond. As you circle counterclockwise, you get to the west side, you have a small piece of property from Pillars of Fire, and then the New Jersey American Water Property, which surrounds the subject property both on the west and on the south as you come out towards Randolph Road. As you get to Randolph Road, you see development that's consistent with the application, consistent with the planning intent and the zoning in the area, which is a series of larger structures, industrial in nature. Just to give a brief identification of what's happening on Randolph Road, as you proceed from north to south on Randolph Road, from Weston Canal Road away, there are about five lots that parallel and opposite our frontage as you, again, move south, as well as a public road, App Guard Drive. Within those five lots, there are seven driveways plus App Guard Drive, so there's eight points of entry and exit from Randolph Road on the east side there. In addition, as you see the massive buildings and parking, it varies. Towards Weston Canal Road, the building's set back a bit, but the parking is approximately 30 feet from the right-of-way line. Moving back, the building is about 60 feet. The next building on Randolph Road coming south, parking is about 30 feet from the front right-of-way line there. Moving further south, then the buildings come forward at about 40, 75, and 55 feet setback. So you have either parking that's relatively close as you're closer to Weston Canal Road, or buildings that are up to the 50-foot allowable setback, or in some cases, slightly encroaching in that setback to some point. So that gives you an idea of what the surrounding area is. The property itself, as you can see from the aerial, has primarily been used as agricultural farmland. There are two points on the northern portion of the property, fronting on Weston Canal Road, that have been used as residential. There are homes and several outbuildings, garages and barns, three to the northwest and three to the northeast on each of those lots. Together, there are three driveways for those two uses that front on Weston Canal Road. There is also, you can see more towards the center of the property, the driveway that's been cut in for the initial development stages of the previous application here for Mr. Profeta, and that driveway, you can see where it's cut in. There's some start of construction already shown on this aerial that has occurred, including a portion of detention basin excavation and some pipe work that's been installed. There is a finger of wetlands in the northwest corner of the property that comes in behind the residential and bisects the property a bit, coming in about a third of the way into the property. That area has been delineated, and an LOI application is pending with the DEP. They're in the process of doing their field review, and we'll get back to us shortly. Additionally, in the northeast corner of the property, where you see a wooded area that is also a wetland finger and open channel area, that is also subject of the same LOI application for the entire property.
Other than those two areas of wetlands, are there any other environmental constraints with respect to this property?
The only other environmental constraint is in the southeast corner of the property, where a portion of the Randolph Brook flows through the property. That has a flood hazard area associated with it, which has been delineated by our firm and is under review by the DEP. Because of that, it also has a Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission Stream Corridor buffer associated as well. And when we get to the site plan, I'll show how we are keeping development impacts outside of those buffer areas.
Okay. Mr. Frude, can we go to Exhibit A2? And actually, I think it would probably make sense if you take that exhibit and sort of flip it so it's in the same orientation and direction as A1.
Right. So now, A2, which is on the right-hand easel, the board has rotated, so now north is continuing at the top of the page, so Weston Canal Road is at the top, and Randolph Road would be on the right side of the page. As I mentioned, the few residential buildings and associated garage and barn structures that are within the canal buffer area along Weston Canal Road will be removed, demolished, and that area will be restored with vegetation. The driveway that has been cut in on Weston Canal Road will be maintained, consistent with the approvals from the previous application, consistent with Somerset County approvals. That driveway will remain. It will still have the same turn lanes in and out that were part of the previous applications.
With respect to that driveway, have we had meetings with Somerset County? Now, obviously, Weston Canal Road is a county road, correct?
Yes. And so Weston Canal Road is a county road, and we did meet with the county at the beginning of this project where we added the additional parcel that gave us the frontage on Randolph Road. And the driveway benefits significantly from the addition of the property to the east there. We have three driveways now on Randolph Road, excuse me. One north of what we're calling Facility 2, one towards the center of the property, and one at the south end. And that, from a site circulation standpoint, provides a tremendous relief from the traffic that would have normally been exiting through a single driveway along Weston Canal Road. Now you have three driveways on Randolph Road, four total for the site, that provides a good distribution of trips throughout the site to get in and out of the site. To point out, and there is a variance that's required because we do have four driveways where two are contemplated within the ordinance. Point out, this frontage from Weston Canal Road running south on Randolph Road to the south corner of the property on that frontage is about 3,000 feet. It's actually a little bit over 3,000 feet. So three driveways, your ordinance has a 50-foot driveway spacing. Parcels can be five acres and have 50 feet of frontage. So there could be, as there is on the other side of Randolph Road, multiple cuts along this frontage. So I think that the provision for three driveways here provides a good distribution of traffic and doesn't have a negative impact because of the length of frontage that we're dealing with here with 3,000 feet of frontage.
Rob, can you go into basically onsite circulation?
Sure. Now, coming back inside, and maybe I'll start just by showing the board where the facilities are. So what we've labeled Facility 1, at the bottom of the page, at the south end of the property, that is approximately a million square feet. And that has its short end facing Randolph Road. Facility 2 and Facility 3 are mirror images of each other. Each of those are just about 300,000 square feet each. Facility 1, because it is a little bit larger, has loading docks on either side. It's cross-docked with, on the long end of the building, trailer parking opposite, the docking spaces, and a secondary portion of trailer parking on the south end of the property. At either end of the property, of the building, excuse me, on the short ends, there are, at the corners of the building, office spaces. Each one is about 8,000 square feet. That's about 3% of the building, between all four of those, 3% of the building is for office space. So it's a much lower office intensity than the previous applications that have been here, which drives down some of the parking demand. But we have 300 vehicular spaces on the west end of the building and 230 on the east end of the building to serve the employees of the facility. On the Facility 2 and Facility 3, again, they're mirror images of each other with the loading facing each other, and trailer parking on the interior, that serves to keep that use and that loading interior to the site. It's not facing Randolph Road. It's well-screened from Weston Canal Road by the existing vegetation and stream corridor. And similarly, on Facility 1, by having the employee parking towards Randolph Road, that keeps the loading interior to the site. And then on either of the long ends of the buildings, Facility 2 and Facility 3, we have employee parking, 205 spaces for Facility 2 and 203 for Facility 3. Similarly, each of those buildings has 3% of the building area dedicated for office, so that's about 4,600 square feet divided between two offices in each building. Circulation-wise, again, I mentioned the driveways, the same driveway from Weston Canal Road, and three driveways from Randolph Road, starting with the north driveway. You can come in, you can first enter employee parking, second, enter some of the loading areas, or continue west and get to employee parking on the west side of Facility 3. The central driveway provides a primary corridor through the site for vehicular traffic, primarily trailer traffic that can come in, access either of the loading areas for Facility 2 or 3. There are also three cuts from that primary corridor into the northern loading area of Facility Number 1. There are additional trailer parking spaces on the opposite side of that, and then as you come around the west side, Facility 1 would be the second set, again, of employee parking spaces, looping around. And what's unique to this to provide enhanced circulation, there is, again, a primary drive aisle along the south side, Facility 1. What that allows for are, again, three cuts into the loading area and trailer parking, as well as secondary trailer parking that's separated also with three cuts into that area. That way, there is a common drive aisle with separation from where the trailer loading or dock access would be. And then circulating back out, again, to Randolph Road.
Now, Rob, you talked about some of the environmental constraints on the property, the two areas of wetlands plus the brook. Can you, again, relate the buildings and what you've done to protect those wetlands and the brook?
Sure. Starting at the south end with the Randolph Brook, as I mentioned, there is not only a flood hazard area associated with that because the slope there and the banks are relatively steep. The flood hazard area is... are relatively steep, the flood hazard area is relatively narrow. But the DRCC has their hundred-foot stream buffer that's outlined on the plan. We have no encroachment into that buffer. We're entirely protecting that buffer and that area from development, no grading or encroachment into that area. The two wetlands fingers at the north end, they also have fifty-foot buffers, fifty-foot wetland buffers that are required. And at this point, we have no provisions for encroachment into those buffers or transition area averaging.
Okay. How is stormwater management going to be handled on this property?
The majority of this site drains in a northerly direction to the two channels and wetlands fingers that head towards the canal that are onsite. A small portion does drain to the south towards the Randolph Brook. The way this site has been designed, all of the runoff from the site will be collected by roof leaders and inlets and the typical stormwater measures. We do have some disconnected impervious in some of the islands, trying to provide and promote some of the best management practices. But ultimately, that runoff goes into one of three detention basins. They're all above ground. They're a combination of infiltration and detention basins, which means that the gray area that you see on these plans is a sand-bottom infiltration area. And that helps satisfy the recharge requirements of the seven colon eight of the DEP requirements and DRCC standards and the township standards. Beyond that infiltration area, the remainder of these basin areas, 1, 2, and 3, will provide detention and attenuation of stormwater runoff peak rates and ultimate discharge, again, into these open channel areas onsite before they're ultimately conveyed to the canal.
Okay. And you sort of meant, you started to mention, these basins are reviewed by numerous agencies?
Yeah, we have applications submitted to the state DEP. We have applications submitted to the DRCC. We have received staff comments from the DRCC. There's nothing more than a few technical comments related to stormwater management. They have reviewed and agreed with our stormwater management design.
Okay, thank you. Can you talk to the board very briefly about how this site will be illuminated?
Sure. There are two primary methods of illumination. One is building mounted lights. And the second is area lights throughout the parking facilities, both within the trailer storage area and the employee parking area. All of those lights will be LED fixtures. They'll be downward focused, they'll be shielded, so that there is no glare from those fixtures. The illumination levels throughout the site are maintained at appropriate levels for safety throughout the site. There are one point of overspill on the property lines, on the west property line, where we border with New Jersey American Water Property. That overspill, the peak overspill, is a reading of about point-seven foot candles. The majority of it where there is overspill is less than half a foot candle, and majority of that property line has no overspill. So it's just a small area where there is a bit of overspill. And that's from the modeling that we did that's part of the site plan submission. What that model doesn't include is the extensive landscaping and evergreen buffering that's on that property line. So if we were to model the screening and shielding that's provided by the landscaping, I believe that those numbers would come to, come close to zero as far as spillage on that property line. Beyond that, the only points of illumination near the property line would be at the driveways, and that's for site safety, for access in and out of the site.
Now, in conjunction with this application, there are some variances that we will be seeking. Can, first of all, and I apologize for not doing it later, in addition to being a licensed engineer, are you also a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I am a professional planner by examination. I testified as a planner in dozens of this house.
Okay, I would offer also his testimony is in the area of planning.
Yep.
Okay. Can you review with the board the variances that we are seeking? And as you're going through them, perhaps you can hit on some of the justifications for those variances?
Certainly. There are a total of five points of variance that we're seeking relief on. The first, and I'm following the order of Mr. Healy's May 14, 2018 letter, the first is impervious coverage. The ordinance allows sixty percent. We have sixty-point-four percent. So we're slightly over the impervious coverage. There are some design constraints that are designed, reasons that are promoted by that variance relief. And I should start by saying, when we look at these variances, and when I look at these as a site designer and as a planner, we did everything we could to minimize the variances down to five and otherwise provide compliance with setback requirements for the building, height requirements for the building throughout the zone standards. Again, the point-four percent overage is de minimis. If you were to pass by the site, whether on Western Canal or on Randolph Road, you would not notice a point-four percent difference. Or even if you were onsite, it would be a de minimis or not noticeable difference. And there are some reasons that we feel it's important to have the design as it is with the increase. Number one, as I mentioned, we have what we feel is appropriate circulation, some cases, the additional circulation patterns throughout the site that provide separation of circulation from the loading areas and trailer storage areas, which provide safer and more efficient circulation. That certainly promotes some purposes of the municipal land use law. Secondly, the town ordinance has a twenty-six-foot-wide drive aisle standard. Normal design consideration would be a twenty-four-foot drive aisle. If we had a twenty-four-foot drive aisle standard, we would probably be satisfying or be close to satisfying the sixty percent. But in honoring the twenty-six-foot drive aisle from the municipal ordinance, we do result in the overage. Again, as far as negatives with regard to that, there's no perception to the community along the frontage or really through the interior of the site because it is a de minimis increase. Second, that increase is mitigated through the stormwater management design that's proposed, and any additional impervious, as well as that point-four percent, is dealt with through the three stormwater basins. The second variance is the parking setback along Randolph Road. And that occurs at two points to the east of Facility Number 2. The ordinance requirement is no parking within the front yard, which is fifty feet. At the northern and southern end of the parking area along Facility 2, it does get as close as twenty-one-point-two feet. At the middle of that parking area, it's compliant at over fifty feet. All of the parking and drive aisles along Facility 1 are beyond the fifty feet. And the remainder of the frontage has no parking along there. So out of three thousand feet of frontage, there are two short stretches where we have a sort of a triangular encroachment into there. It's not a straight run. You can see there is an angle point in Randolph Road, which creates not a parallel square design layout like we engineers like to do. So we're able to honor it in the middle, but at the northern and southern tip there, there is that slight encroachment. Again, as you move west through the building blocks of Facilities 2 and 3, we are constrained by the wetlands that exist there, where we can't just slide all of that to the west. And to mitigate that, along that frontage, you can see on the submitted plans in the exhibit here, there is a run of evergreen trees, and we can supplement and buffer that to provide additional berming and evergreen trees in that area. Thirty-some trees could be added there to provide a nice row of evergreens. Still honoring the water manisment that exists along the frontage, but providing some good buffering and screening to help mitigate the variance relief that's requested there.
Mr. Fruit, with respect to the enhanced landscaping along that frontage, do you have an exhibit to demonstrate that enhanced landscaping?
I do. And there's a reduced version there if we want to circulate that.
That would be a four, correct?
So while that's getting passed around, I'll mark this as a four. This is a landscape exhibit. And what this shows is the site landscaping plan in the area of Facility 2. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to do the same thing I did with this color rendering. I'm going to rotate this exhibit so that Randolph Road remains on the left side of the page. What this exhibit shows here is the enhanced landscaping that can be provided in this area.
Rob, before you even go to that, in the exhibit that's being passed out to the board members, there is some coloring in yellow and then there's some white. Just for the reference of the board members, the yellow portions at the, at either end of the building are the areas that are in violation of the front yard setback. Is that correct?
That's correct. So the, what we show here on the exhibit what's being passed around, we've highlighted with yellow, the triangular slivers on each side that result from the encroachment. And you can see that it's not the entire stretch of parking, it's not the entire depth of every parking space, but it is a triangular sliver as the result of the angle point in Randolph Road. So that gives you some perspective as to the area of encroachment and the intensity of encroachment relative, again, to the three thousand feet of frontage on Randolph Road there. And also relative to what's happening on the other side of Randolph Road, which is parking that's within about thirty feet, buildings that are within forty to fifty feet. Our intent here is to keep the building a little bit further back, almost double the setback at about a hundred feet from the road, and keep that mass a little bit further away from the road so that you're not driving down a sort of canyon corridor of structures and keep the building back, get the parking in front. And with the parking in front mitigated with the berming. And you can see that in the section view A and section view B, you can see how we've been able to create some berming within that area that will, again, help shield, screen, and mitigate the encroachment into, into the front yard.
So one comment I have on that is, I hear a lot about evergreen trees, but I don't, I mean, I can't really tell from this detail, and I didn't look in the sheet, in the landscaping sheet, but, you know, monoculture of evergreen trees, I'd rather have, you know, some mix of, you know, evergreen and deciduous trees that look more sort of natural, I think.
That's, that's not a problem. I mean, the intent of this exhibit is to show that the mass that can be provided to help screen and shield the area. We're certainly willing to work with your planning and engineering staff to provide appropriate landscaping, agreeable landscaping in that area.
So let me, let me ask you one, sorry, Bob, just one more quick question. Why did you choose to put the parking in the front and the building back more instead of vice versa?
Several reasons. One, two, because of the size, you know, the mass of the building, keep that massive building away. Realizing that the encroachment here can be mitigated with the parking encroachment by the landscaping and berming, and it's a much smaller, lower intensity of encroachment. Second is the way the building's designed, it makes sense to have the loading on one side and the employee parking and staff parking on the other side. So naturally, that's how these buildings tend to design and lay out.
In other words, if you were to switch that, then your loading side would really be the Randolph Road side?
Yeah, we wanted to avoid having loading out and facing Randolph where the public would see it. That would be much more.
Right. I agree with that. Bob, I'm going to see.
You mentioned something about berming that, meaning how, how much of a berm is it going to be?
The berm reaches about five feet high. There's a point in the middle where it can be a little bit higher because it's a little bit wider. At the narrow end, it's about three to four feet high. That'll be, and then planted. So the berm itself will have the ability to provide the, what we typically use for headlight screening and shielding, if we were to use a low shrub, to provide some headlight screening. The berm will provide that effect. So when cars are pulling in out of spaces, you have the headlight screening from the berm, and then the additional screening and shielding can occur from the.
Width of it would be the whole width of the paving.
From the property line to the, to the curb, yes.
Wait, let me just, so, over here. So at the minimum, the berm will be three to four feet high with landscaping on it? Is that what I heard?
That's correct.
And that, and that would occur where the setback essentially, well, where the water easement starts to the parking, looks like the water easement, the parking is right up to the easement. So how are you providing berming and landscaping in that area? In that corner, yeah.
In, in this corner, there would be, would be, have the berming, but not the landscaping within the easement.
I have a question about pedestrian access and circulation on the site. I see, you know, the automotive traffic is prioritized here and not much parking as to the pedestrians getting out of cars and access in the building. So can you touch on that briefly because I have a concern about safety, given the number of parking spaces there?
Certainly, and that's a good point. And I didn't mean to focus too much on, on big, but it's one of the, one of the important points here. As you, if you can see on each building, at each of the corners where the office is, probably looks like a blue dot from where you are, but those are the handicap accessible spaces, approximate to each office. And on either end of Facilities 2 and 3 would be the handicap spaces. And along those handicap spaces, there would be sidewalk and access. So as you can see, each of the employee parking areas is separated from the truck movement and circulation aisles so that there are not trucks and circulating traffic going through that. It's kept separate and the pedestrians, this is not a shopping mall or a large commuter lot, to, two rows of parking spaces. You move towards the building and then get onto a sidewalk towards each of the office doors.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
To another subject, you'd mentioned that the existing buildings were to be torn down. And I did drive out there, and I know the house to the north is, has been so extensively altered that it's not really, has any historic value. And I think it may date from the twenties and not be the original house. On that site years ago, there was a very nice example of a Dutch barn, but that was carted off about twenty years ago by the New Jersey Barn Company and is now someplace else. But I did not realize, in the prior applications, we hadn't talked about the next house south. And I just wasn't looking for that. So I have no idea what that looks like or if it might have any historic significance. So does anyone in here have a photograph of that house?
I do not have a photograph, and the reason it wasn't touched on in previous applications, that's part of the additional property that was acquired. So that is new to this application. But your question is, is timely in that when we met with the Historic Preservation Commission last night, similar questions were raised, and they asked us to come back next month with some information on the houses to ensure that we, the demolition was not of anything of significant.
Okay, thank you.
I went and looked at the house today, Bob, and it's colonial style. I can't, can't tell how old it is, but it has a very fine front doorway, very fine. I mean, if you tear down the house, you want to see if you can sell the doorway to somebody. But I wish you would simply subdivide off the house and keep it in the housing stock.
I think that would be a very good idea. I think that would be a very good idea.
Yeah, because you're, you're really not using the area where the house is. There's also a barn there that it would be absolutely no loss, but the house is really quite nice.
The, the issue with that, and again, this is a quick reaction, that may put us into a use variance situation because that house is not a permitted use in that zone any longer, and that may create other issues. I mean, if the board wants us to look at it, we would be happy to look at it, also in conjunction with the Historic Preservation Commission. Perhaps if there is value in preserving the house, obviously, that portion of the property is not of any use to us other than providing coverage. And if the house can be preserved and maybe that piece be subdivided back out, we could do something, and we'd be happy to do it. But I, I think it's probably a little bit more complicated than something we want to discuss tonight, but.
It's a pre-existing, non-conformative use.
But then we've now added more coverage because we were going to take that down, so now our pervious coverage changes. Again, if it, and nobody knows whether it's worth salvaging or not worth salvaging based on what, what we know today. Again, also to preserve it as housing stock makes sense, but I think, you know, we'd be happy to do it, but I think we really do need to look at it. happy to do it, but I think we really do need to look at it in, in a little bit more detail before we make a commitment to do that.
Sounds reasonable.
Your owner or officer mentioned something about, does the company have any experience with 17 or 16 million square feet of facilities like this nationwide? With all that experience, is all of this parking necessary?
Yeah, and we've worked with them on a number of those applications, as well as with other developers of similar type products. What this applicant, what Bridge Development uses a prescription based upon the percentage of office space and the percentage of warehouse space, one for 250 of office and one for 3,000 of warehouse. So this is something that they feel is very important with not only the, the marketability and the, the saleability of this to their tenants, it's important to realize, you know, the, the market is changing, that it's evolving, and, and now employee parking is important. If we were to have less parking, the implications and results of that, if you had a tenant that needed more parking, now you're parking on the drive aisles, you're trying to park in fire lanes, and you come up with.
Yeah, I understand that. The thing is that I've been, heard lots of applications involving warehousing, where we've heard testimony that with warehousing, you have less automobile traffic because you theoretically have less employees. What makes this project different? Because you're talking almost 900 parking places, right? And you don't have a tenant.
So, the, the less traffic, less, less employees is per square foot, we have 1,600 square feet here, so we certainly have less than we would as office or retail of that size. So I think that might be the comparison of, of less traffic and parking relative to other uses.
And, because you're.
I just was surprised to find out that it takes that many employees to support a warehousing operation. That just may be my ignorance, if you want to put it that way.
Bob, I, I think perhaps John can shed some further light on it.
If I could just say it today, what we try and do, because, again, this is, we've, we've built these facilities, we've leased them, we've managed them, and what we try and do is, when we design sites like this, we try and make them universal, which means we try and make them good for a number of different uses. And there's a number of different uses that can use this facility. It could be distribution, it could be a 3PL, it could be all different types of companies. And what we've recognized in the past is that they do need employees, they do need the amount of spaces that we have designed here. You know, initially, we've had sites where we, you know, we were pushed to put less spaces in, and before we know it, you have cars parking in fire lanes, you have cars parking in truck areas. So this is not about just designing a facility that may meet a certain need, that can be very automated, or something like that. This, we build facilities so that they stay full, they have abilities to be leased, and that, and so they need to be universal, and that's why you see kind of very symmetrical designs. If the buildings get demised, you want to make sure that different parts of the buildings have parking, and that's all looked at this thing. We look at it very closely with the designers, this is not just them designing this in a vacuum, this is truly something that needs to be designed this way for uni-, you know, universability and, and having a good product for the long term.
I, I don't watch parking on the street or places that would cause a problem either, I just don't, just would like to drive by five years from now, or whatever it is, and see the parking lots half empty. And then I also, then, with that, find it interesting, I might ask the questions later, but the traffic report basically says this facility's got no measurable impact on the traffic, parking over 900 cars. So, I, I support this kind of facility, I support it in this area, right from the township's point of view.
Understood. And listen, there is no benefit for us to, to do more parking either. There's no benefit for us to do additional parking or pay for more paving. We really do it based on the fact that a facility being a long-term good facility in its design manner.
You know, in some ways, I, I mean, I agree with Bob, that in, in other applications the board has heard, and I'm sure that's true, the zoning board as well, we, we've allowed the applicant to bank parking, because the, the issue I have, is very much the same as Bob does, is you don't have a tenant. If you had a tenant and said, well, the tenant needs 900 spaces, because I can prove that, that's one thing, to say you need 900 spaces and, you know, 400 are unused, without knowing who, who your tenant's going to be, I, I have a little more of a problem with. And I mean, it's really not the impervious coverage, because it's only 0.4%, and yeah, would increase if you subdivide the house, but I mean, that's, we're creating that, so it doesn't bother me either, it's, there's no real change there. It's really the principle of, you know, having that much parking for uses in which you don't, you don't know what, what they'll be. And so banking is an option that we would entertain.
Hey, I've just mentioned a couple of things. And one is, I know the previous project that got approved, I think it was like 699 spaces or something, to that effect. If you were to take that same number and apply it to the whole double parcels, there'd be almost 1,277 spaces. So our use here, even the parking, is less intense than was on the previous use. And the other thing is, when you're negotiating leases with, you know, tenants, you know, the tenants need to, you know, have, know that they have the parking available at that time. And whether it's a process where you bank them and you go back to the board, or you go back to the professionals, and you have to build them again, there's just a process. And just part of us leasing these facilities, what we found very effective, is making them universal right from the start, so you have that ability there. You know, and this, as opposed to thinking that you're going to need less, and then you're chasing, you know, trying to build stuff later, and you're in the middle of winter, and a tenant has to move in, this is just from experience. We're certainly not here to ask for any more than, than we need, but, I mean, this is something that I've been involved in for over 20 some odd years, and this, these are just things that we know that are problematic.
This isn't, let's say it's a deal breaker, as far as I'm concerned, but the, the thing is, when you mention the other projects, you're correct, but at least two of them were really user-specific, and we knew what was happening. The 20-building one, obviously not so much, but those were also smaller buildings and a different, different kind of site plan. This is probably the most cloudy, if you want to put that, put it that way, thing that we're going into without knowing what we're going to have as an end user, other than going by your reputation and your mentioning Heller and their success in the town, too. That's a lot of, lot of cars over there.
But it's, again, I'm just going to mention, it's not as much as what the previous use would have been. I mean, it's, this is, even though it's 900 some odd cars, there's also quite a bit of square footage. And if you can see how it's set up on the site, there's logic to where it is, they're still separated by themselves, and it's not that you have them all throughout the facility, there's areas that are very specific to where they're located.
You, you mentioned that engineers like rectangles, they also like pentagons. I don't know if you've considered, now, this is not to scale, obviously, a pentagon shape that would basically within, follow a 50-foot setback from the road, you would eliminate two variances. You would have your, your setback variance go away, and your 0.4% eliminated.
You referring to the shape of the building?
Yes, the shape of the building.
I think there's anyone who likes rectangles more than an engineer, it's a, you know, it's a, it's a warehouse user, the efficiency inside the building just doesn't, doesn't work. I mean, we, we did truncate a corner of Facility 1, but that's a much larger facility, and that's nearer to the office area, so it's, was able to be accommodated, I think, to, to truncate to that degree, the angles of a, of a building for this particular use would be very inefficient.
Well, I think with 129 acres of land, asking to push within 50 feet of your setback, of less than 50 feet, is, is asking a lot.
We, we understand the, the ask, it's a variance, and we understand that we're, we're trying to put the proofs on that show that that variance is, for one, not a significant portion of the 3,000 feet of frontage we have, and number two, not inconsistent with the corridor here, and can be mitigated by landscaping and birmingham. So we understand the ask, we're requesting relief and variance relief from this board, but we do feel that some of the things we've done to mitigate that with the design.
And by changing your shape, you could also put in more trees along there, along this berm, which you, you have a, a big shortage on your, your tree count.
Actually, if you cut the corners off both ends of that building, like, like you did to the third one, you would minimize some variances, do all the things that she mentioned, and you'd actually maybe go a long way to breaking up the building visually as you drive up the street, which kind of works into the buffering question a little bit, it's not going to look like one long wall, however many feet it.
Mr. Chairman, I have a, a related question. Can you describe any avenues that you pursued to try to meet the requirement? I mean, the, the board members mentioned a few. I note that the building, you mentioned there aren't any tenants, does the building need to be 330 feet deep? The parking aisle, or the, or the landscaped aisle between the two smaller buildings is 20 feet wide, does it need to be 20 feet wide? Could that be either eliminated or made smaller, and then the warehouse and parking lot moved over, so there's a, a larger buffer along the frontage? Have you pursued any of these modifications?
We, we certainly did look at options, I mean, we, we don't take lightly coming in here and asking for variance relief. As I mentioned, the, specifically, the passenger vehicle drive aisles on each side are 26 feet per the ordinance, 24 feet would be a normal standard, that would provide, each of those would provide, together would provide four feet of additional setback there, but that would require additional relief from this board, so it's, it's a balancing effect there. The center island here, that's 20 feet between the two facilities, that does provide disconnected impervious and water quality. Could we achieve the same effects with a narrower island? Yes. Would it be as effective for disconnected impervious and water quality? No, but that's a subjective element, and there, there's probably a balance point there that we could work on.
I mean.
Those wide aisles are also going to help the big rigs that are going to come in there.
No, we're talking about the, the car aisles, Ms. MacIver, not the, the truck aisles. The car aisles are 26 feet wide, we can reduce the car parking aisles to 24 feet, which would pick up four feet. We're not talking about reducing the truck aisles.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, you know, you could ask for a variance for the, you know, to the 26 to the 24 feet parking aisle, perhaps, rather than, you know, more this, this kind of bulk variance. I mean, a corollary to what Cecile just mentioned is, you know, if you like your rectangular building, you could just eliminate the parking and, and the, that setback, and then you would be able to have the setback. I mean, you'd still be able to have some parking where the yellow shading isn't in our, in our copy, but if you eliminated that parking, then you've got, you've eliminated that variance, and probably your impervious coverage variance, too. That's a, that's a corollary to redesigning the building.
The, can we?
But if you made all the parking stalls 20, about 30 feet.
Yeah.
Another thing that you could do, if you eliminated 20 parking spaces that are up against upper end of the wetlands to the south, and the parking spaces across from the southwest corner of Building 3, then you could move the whole buildings 2 and 3, all of that, 20 feet to the west, and that would give you the space along Randolph Road. You'd, I guess you'd decrease the size of the large detention basin slightly also, but...
Sir, can we, can we take five minutes, so I can, I mean, there's a lot of things being thrown out here that we probably would like to digest, and, and maybe if we take five minutes, we could talk about them and come back with maybe an alternative.
Okay. Mr. Lanford, when you're doing that, can you just confirm, the testimony was that there's going to be birmingham within that easement, I believe I heard? Is that permitted by the holder of that easement? I believe that's a New Jersey American Water, there's a 30-inch water main, I believe. Are you allowed to put fill on top of that easement for the purpose of birmingham? I think the board needs to know that, if that's the part of your mitigation for this variance.
Right, we, we will confirm that.
And I, I just have two other questions before you go, nothing major. One is, is there any concern about the current configuration of the driveways, would this being used as a cut-through road, and the potential dangers associated with that, especially when both roads are backed up during the peak hour? Secondly, is what happens during lunch? Are there accommodations on-site for all of the employees that will be working there, or would they be leaving the site to access other places around the area? Because the midday peak wasn't taken into account in your traffic impact study.
So, I'll, I'll answer a little bit, but I think when our traffic engineer comes up, he'll, he'll dig into it more. As far as a cut-through, can't prevent anyone from cutting through, but I think that the nature of the, the driveway, it's not a clear cut line, you can't see your way through, and it is a bit circuitous coming around on the shortest path. So I don't think it's an obvious cut-through, I don't think it'll be readily apparent to someone that says, hey, look, I can see over there, I'm going to go quickly and get there. So I don't expect it to be a, an occurrence. And with regard to lunchtime, I imagine with most of these facilities, there'll be a kitchen, there'll be provisions there, people will bring their lunch, there's going to be a combination of some people going out and patronizing the local stores and restaurants in the community, and some people are going to bring their lunch in and stay in. I don't want to speak for my traffic engineer, but the reason that that wasn't, isn't typically taken into account here is because there's a difference between the, the morning and evening peaks, when the road traffic is heavy, and, and there's more of a shift change and increase in traffic from our site that may impact that, versus a percentage of those employees that are leaving for lunchtime onto a road network that's much less taxed than it is during the morning and evening peaks.
All right, I'll take five.
Okay, we will reconvene.
Thank you for allowing us an opportunity to review all of these comments, and I think we perhaps can resolve this issue. The numbers may be one or two parking spaces off because until we do the actual math, but if the board would consider reducing the drive aisles for the aisles where the cars are parked, it would give us an extra, basically, four feet. Is that correct, Mr. Food?
Yes, that'd be four feet. And to be clear, it would be along the west side of Facility Three and along the east side of Facility Two, where it is passenger cars only.
And if we do that, then we would be able to at least take some of the parking spaces that are now in violation. They would then not be in violation. We would then agree to any parking spaces that are within the 50-foot setback, we would remove. However, we do have the ability to recapture those parking spaces at either end, some of those parking spaces. We won't recapture them all, but we would have the ability to recapture the parking spaces at the end of the building. So we would agree to eliminate the frontyard setback variance for the parking in return for a variance for the two feet for the drive aisles. We will take all the parking spaces out of the frontyard setback. We will then amend our plan or revise it to show some additional parking. And again, we're losing approximately 65 spaces. Mr. Food, is that a fair estimate?
As it is now, it's about 75 spaces total with the four-foot shift. I'm guessing it's about 10 and five chains, so somewhere between 60 and 65 probably that would come out of this side facing Randolph Road and replicate as many as we can north of the building.
Okay. And in doing that, first of all, we would still meet the township ordinance's parking requirement, because if we took out all of those spaces, we'd be in violation of your parking requirements. By adding those spaces back in, we will be in compliance with the ordinance.
You mean the minimal requirements?
Minimal requirement.
You know, this board, this board has never been shy of granting, for a good reason, reduced parking below. It's the above that we have a problem with.
And I think we've explained...
We understand that that's not part of the discussion. You're not legally over in parking. We understand it.
Right.
You know, the other point Mark made, and I think, you know, you guys are on to there, is, you know, I'm not that great with direction, but there's places, right, in the south, I guess, south corner of the site, where, you know, it's only, where reducing that to 24 feet is not going to impact a thing. So, I mean, you know, there are places. So I think you have the, I think you have the concept.
The other thing is, just so, again, to finish the whole thought process, we will then, if we're taking all of the parking out of the frontyard setback, we will not need the berm, because it won't be necessary any longer, because we will meet, we'll put the plantings where we're allowed to put the plantings in, but we will not need the Birmingham. The other thing, again, to err on the side of caution, here, we have double, not being a traffic consultant, I don't know, we have double stacked aisles. Here, the aisles will be single stacked. We may go up like 1/10th of a percent of impervious. So just to play it safe, I would ask for an impervious coverage variance to 60.5 in case it bumps up just a little bit because of the way the parking is going to be redesigned.
Well, you know, the other thing related to that is, as Mark pointed out in his report, you guys have not, and it'll probably be de minimis, but it may have increased it to 60.5, your trash enclosures. So you could potentially, right, do a little over there.
Yeah.
If you wanted to waiver for that.
And our thought process on the trash enclosures, quite frankly, would be that most of our customers would probably be using compactors, so we don't need a lot of trash enclosures. They're probably minimal. And if, in fact, there is a trash enclosure that we would need, we would ask for administrative approval and probably lose a trailer parking space and put it in there. So we're not adding any impervious coverage, but I think if we bump it up to 16.5, that also gives us a little bit of flexibility in that area.
So what does the board think of this proposal?
It's an improvement.
A great improvement.
Okay. All right.
All right, now, let me just jump back to make sure we hit, oh, we talked about the number of driveways. The driveway with Mr. Food, can you really hit on that very quickly, why there's a variance at the one driveway?
Certainly. So the driveway width variance is related to the Weston Canal Road driveway, which would be at the top of the page on A2. That, just for the purpose of clarifying the variance, that width is 54.8 where 36 is allowed, that is the exact design and geometry of the driveway that was reviewed and approved on the previous application, reviewed and approved by Somerset County, who has jurisdiction on Weston Canal Road. And the purpose for that driveway width is, has a couple components. One is, we have separated right and left turn egress, and on the ingress side, we have opened up the radius, the radii there, to make sure that we allow for appropriate turning movements in and out. So that is consistent with the previous approval.
Yeah, I mean, I would assume that you would need a fairly wide mouth to the driveway for sight on Weston as well.
Yes.
That's part of the reason that, you know, other than the multi-turn thing that you just mentioned.
Okay. Let's move on very quickly to the issue of the deficiency of landscaping within the parking areas. First of all, very briefly, go into the thought process, why there was very few trees, if any, in the parking areas, and how we've decided to rectify that.
Sure. And I guess a quick confirmation of the landscape plan design here has a few components. Number one is starting at the north end along Weston Canal Road, at the north end of the basins, providing additional supplementary buffering and landscaping there, evergreen landscaping on those berms to provide some screening to the canal park there. There was a comment in the review letters about providing some additional buffering by the cemetery that fronts on Weston Canal Road, and we will make sure that we have additional plantings there, probably 10 to 15 additional evergreens to provide buffering, consistent with the previous approval. That was an oversight on our part.
You know, I noticed a theme here. Let me hammer at it one more time, and maybe this is because you're engineers and you like square things, but you're also like buffers, and buffers mean evergreens. Please, work with Mark to revise, I mean, around the cemetery, I don't know, with that historic cemetery, and I defer to Bob, but, you know, I doubt that the sort of like gestalt you would be going for is a buffer of evergreen trees, because, I mean, that's not, it's like oak and stuff. That's what I envisioned. So, I mean, you're not screening it from, I mean, yeah, you're screening it from your buildings, but you're going to be able to do that anyway. But I keep hearing evergreens, and I need to caution you that that's not all I want to see there.
Mike, the reason for screening behind the cemetery is because that's the one place that you can see from Weston Canal Road and indeed from the canal towpath up into the site, and you would see the buildings through the cemetery. So that's why we've always insisted on having sort of extra screening behind the cemetery. I was at the cemetery there today, and the oldest stone that still has legible marking was, Cecile died in 1772, I think, so it's pretty historic.
Yeah, I mean, I just wanted to look somewhat like a natural rural cemetery and not something that's just screened off from a warehouse development.
I think, to your point, Chairman, we have the width and ability there to maybe a little bit further from the cemetery, provide some of the evergreens that help shield it from the park, but as we get closer to the cemetery, provide some deciduous hardwood-type oaks and things that would be more complementary to the cemetery.
One thing that I might suggest to be thought about are trees that will not grow really tall, because I'm on the board of the cemetery in East Millstone, and when Sandy came along, we had a lot of evergreens, and a lot of them came down. And we were very lucky. Only five stones were damaged, and we had them repaired. But how these trees manage to fall with a stone here and a stone there? So I don't think around the cemetery is trees that will grow really tall would be doing the cemetery a great favor, in that if they come down, it's a problem.
I think, Mr. Rercini, it's safe to say, we'll work with Mr. Healy, and we'll come up with the appropriate plantings for the area around the cemetery, both to provide the aesthetics and also the screening.
I have every confidence you'll be able to do that. But, I mean, that, I think, is leading to where you're going with this topic, is, you know, there's a big deficiency in landscaping on-site, number of trees. You've obviously addressed a couple places where more can be planted, which will reduce that discrepancy, and now you're going to talk about the parking islands, right?
Yep. So first of all, just briefly give the board your thought process, why there were very few trees within the drive aisles and what we're proposing, and why it makes sense to do what we're proposing.
Sure. Again, the primary focus was on providing the appropriate presentation to the outside, whether it be along a frontage of a road or along the perimeter. Within the site, because of the trailer traffic and a lot of the trailer parking where trailers are backing up to drive aisles, we have to be very careful of putting trees in that are just going to get damaged and destroyed by the trailers. So we're careful there. But reading the comments and hearing the concerns of the board, what we've looked at is possibilities to provide additional plantings and not deal with issues within the trailer parking areas is to focus on the four vehicular employee parking areas, and we've done some calculations, basically following the one per 2,000 square feet of impervious within those four parking areas to make sure that we have tree plantings that are consistent with the intent of the ordinance in those areas.
And so that will, there still will be a deficiency, but that will increase the number of plantings within the parking areas. Is that correct?
Yeah. In total, we're looking between those four fields, about 100, 130 additional trees.
That's good. And I assume that the balance will be made up in the form of in lieu payment that...
Which is required, yes.
Right. Okay.
Well, actually, technically, there is no, the in lieu payment comes from Chapter 222, which is the tree removal.
Oh, removal, yeah.
This is either a variance or not.
Yeah.
There's pre-replacement provision in the zoning.
Right, because there's no trees they're bringing down, right? Is that what you're saying?
Yes. There's two different requirements. One's Chapter 222, which talks about if you're taking trees down, you're supposed to replace them on-site. If you can't replace them on-site, there's an in lieu provision.
Right.
Separate from that, in the zoning ordinance, there's a requirement that you have a tree for every 2,000 square feet of hard surface.
Okay.
That's what they're asking a variance for, and there's no provision in the ordinance for payment in lieu.
Right.
If they don't meet it, they need to ask for a variance and justify that variance. And you either grant it or you don't.
And what we're proposing is to provide the 2,000 square feet within the car parking as required by the ordinance and ask for a variance so that we don't plant trees in the areas where there is trailer parking, and we would request that variance.
And it's up to the board to decide whether that's sufficient rationale for the variance.
Yeah, I mean, I take your point about the trailer parking, and I assume that snow and various other things would also kind of reduce the maneuverability at some points in time, and stuff would get knocked over and, yeah. That said, is there any landscaping at all in the... That said, is there any landscaping at all, anywhere that, I mean, like shrubs at least, or something really kind of low, so it's just not, you know, barren?
Right now, it's proposed as a straight lawn area.
So could you point out the areas on the site where the trees would go?
Certainly. Starting adjacent to Facility One at the south end of the property, we have two hundred and thirty parking spaces at the east end of that, so either against the building or in the island that separates that parking from the through aisle or along the north, and that area could be supplemented with trees. And that helps, again, it serves the intent of the ordinance, which provides the shade for the cars, for the employees, so they're a little bit cooler. Secondly, the three hundred and five spaces along the west end, we have landscaping that surrounds that parking. There are a few islands in the middle of that parking area that would be able to be landscaped, and we've looked at spacing on the order of thirty-five to fifty feet on center, being aware of light poles and utilities and things, we're confident that we can meet the one per two thousand within those parking areas. The two remaining would be the two hundred and three spaces on the west side of Facility Three, and what we have left, again, in the parking on the east side of Facility One, whether it's directly on the east side or it's shifted around to the north, we would account for that area and provide park, excuse me, trees at one per two thousand square feet of impervious.
What about, it looks like there's relatively large grass areas at the end of the two smaller buildings, could additional trees be coming in there as well?
We could certainly utilize that to add trees, yes.
All right, thank you.
Ed?
Yeah. I'm looking at sheet twenty-nine, which is landscaping A, and you have lots of trees planted around that northeasterly detention basin, but you even have some of them planted underneath the existing trees. You've got several good-sized trees, which, thank heavens, you're keeping, and then you're proposing to plant additional trees underneath them, which probably won't do very well.
Which basin are you referring to? I don't have particularly sheet twenty-nine.
Not A two. It's not A two that you've marked, it's a different, if it's...
Is your...
So, and I guess for the benefit of...
Page twenty-nine of your plans.
So for the benefit of the board and the record, we're looking at the area on the north side of Basin Three.
Yeah.
Where we have, again, a row of screening and some existing mature trees in that area. What we've shown schematically here is a row of screening, if we have to shift that north or south a little bit, to avoid being directly under the canopy of an existing tree.
No. Or you could plant just bushes there for a bit. It reminds me of another thing, where you have a list of page twenty-eight, where you, your land... On page twenty-eight, where you have your landscape schedule, you list Viburnum ex... God, I can't read it at this distance. It's the leatherleaf Viburnum, is an evergreen shrub. Viburnum is evergreen. But on the other hand, just above that, you have a bird's nest spruce listed as an evergreen shrub. Spruce is a shrub.
This particular spruce is a low-growing, eighteen to twenty-four inch, so, yeah, this is.
The dwarf spruce. Yeah. I like the spruce in Rockefeller Center, yeah. All right. Well, at any rate, we'll work this out with Mark. You get the intent, I think.
And I think it's been our, yeah, our intent is to provide as many, replace as many trees as possible in areas where they will survive, and we will come up with the exact number, and not plant trees where they're just going to be destroyed. That doesn't make any sense. To get to move on, Mr. Food, let's jump very quickly to the report of, can I stop for a second before we get off the trees? How do you want to handle your deficit?
The ordinance requires that where there is a deficit in trees, we have to make a contribution to the shade tree.
Or it reads that you have to plant them, replace them on-site?
If...
Or off-site, or financial payment.
Right.
I'd like to suggest something a little novel, since this is, there's a little bit of a variance connected with it, that you work with Mark, who could identify some of them, many places in our town, which have never gotten when they should have, or have lost street trees, and have your client agree to, some of those replacement trees can go to planting street trees off-site in areas that need them.
Your ordinance provides for that. We will work with him to see if we can get some of that accomplished.
Yeah, if I could make a suggestion, actually, the township has a shade tree commission, and when an applicant can't meet the provision on site, it goes into the shade tree fund, and a large part of what the shade tree commission does is exactly that, is look for opportunities to replant trees. So respectfully, what I would suggest is that if they can't meet chapter two twenty-two, that they be required to do the payment in lieu, and then the folks that are charged with the township of replacing trees within the township and putting in the right place, that they do that.
It works for me, except I would actually like to see street trees going up someplace. This is what I'm referring to. Shade Tree Commission has a lot of different agendas to deal with, and I'm trying to be a little bit more specific in developments in front of some commercial buildings where street trees have been omitted, I'd like to see them done and growing, and I think it's a little quicker to do it with a building that is going to be being constructed, and it's tied to that construction a little bit.
The problem...
To the application.
Just one other issue, Mr. Thomas, if they are on some private property somewhere, we don't have the right...
No, I'm talking about the ones that go, have to be put on public right-of-way. There's plenty, plenty of those, and the town could be replacing them, basically for free, with someone else's labor.
I, what I would suggest, if you have some sites in mind, why don't you let me know, and then I can convey that to the Shade Tree Commission.
Gladly, I have a number of sites.
Okay.
Peter, I know you're going to delve into the staff reports, and starting with Mark's, and I think, reading through it, we've gotten through most of the comments, just let me hit upon, I assume you want a waiver from site identification signage, because you don't know who's going to be tenants yet, and you might come back for that if there's any?
We are proposing signage as conforming signage on the, Mr. Food can point them out on the plan, at certain driveways on Randolph, and they will be conforming signs. If a tenant needs a larger sign, we will then require that tenant to come back and seek a variance. Also, the previous applications had a sign on Weston Canal, which we're going to remove, since it obviously, I think, would be better that there is no signage, which also may deal with Mr. Brown's concern of people cutting through. We're not going to put any signage on Weston Canal Road at all.
Okay. And your waiver for profiles of proposed utility lines, can you just tell me a little bit about that in two seconds?
Sure. That essentially is what I typically call a temporary waiver. There's moving parts in the design. As we now know where things will stand, for example, adjusting the parking, the aisle widths tweaks that a little bit. Now that we're locked in a little bit with the design, we'll provide those profiles to your engineer for reading.
Okay.
Okay. And then jumping to the engineering comments, there was a report issued May fifteenth by Scott Thomas. You've had an opportunity to review that, Mr. Food?
I did. I spoke to Scott the other day about the comments there. The majority of those comments are technical, and we're happy to address them and comply with the details that he's requesting. There are a few in there that I would say require a little bit of working back and forth, but I believe that we can come to agreement with Scott on that.
Are there any in specific that you feel you need to discuss with the board, or is just sort of an engineer-to-engineer thing that you feel you can work out?
There's a couple I discussed with Scott, which he suggested maybe some guidance would help. One is the pavement section that's proposed. He's requested, and I think we should turn, if I have the right... This is on construction details on page nine, it's comments fifty-nine and sixty for the record. He's requesting a thicker pavement section, consistent with a road spec per your ordinance. These are...
That's definitely an engineer thing.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't think anybody up here has the expertise, maybe Carl, to weigh in on that. So when it comes to like pipe dimensions and stuff, trust me, years ago, board used to delve into that stuff.
No problem.
I'm like, we didn't even sleep at a Holiday Inn last night, how the hell can we actually know about this?
Sure.
That's what engineers are for, so...
No problem. We typically have our...
That's technical in my mind. I'm talking like site plan, anything else.
There are no significant site plan issues. Also, just very briefly, John House, we will work everything out with John House to make sure he's satisfied. His report for the record is dated May twenty-fourth, two thousand eighteen.
Correct. And the sewer authority, May fifteenth, twenty eighteen, similarly, we will...
Comply.
Comply with those comments.
And I think we've covered everything. We are really cutting into our architect's time. I have no further questions of Mr. Food.
I have a question about number forty-one among the engineering comments, in which he says, "There are a number of replacement trees proposed to be planted on the slope of infiltration basins. These must be moved in order to avoid future root damage to the clay cores to discourage burrowing animals and holes caused by uprooted trees. All of these conditions could cause a dam failure and flood Weston Canal Road." And actually, I noticed that your trees generally are on the tops of the, what you might call the uphill slopes of the detention basins, not on the part that fronts on the wetlands, which is where you would be most concerned about any damage due to trees. I think he's overreacting there.
It's definitely a sensitive subject, and we want to make sure that we don't create a dangerous condition. I don't necessarily disagree with you that the way we've designed this, we've tried to put the landscaping on the slopes, so that it isn't over the clay core and doesn't create a damage to the berm of the basin. But I think that with the proper dialogue, we can get that in the right place.
Yeah, it's always desirable to have landscaping around detention basins, and one thing is, then the trees transpire water up out of the detention basin, lessening the amount that runs off. What, how do you, what sort of planting, if any, do you propose in the bottom of the detention basins? You have an area that'll be sand, but you have other area in the bottom.
The remainder of the basin would be grass bottom.
No, that won't do much to purify the water, the desirable. If you let things grow a little more, it purifies the water more, and since this is going fairly directly to the DNR canal, which is a drinking water source, I think you really, and you may hear from the Canal Commission on this, you really need to ensure that the runoff doesn't carry oil, for instance, from the parking lots through into the canal. And the way to do this is to have more vegetation that it percolates through, such as, you know, low herbage, but more than grass in the bottom of the detention basins.
We're certainly sensitive to that. We, like, as I mentioned previously, we've met with the DRCC on a number of occasions, and we have an application that they've already commented on, because of our proximity to the canal, and I didn't mention this previously, but typical water quality standard is eighty percent. We're held to a higher standard because of our proximity to the canal, and we're satisfying that through the infiltration and the natural means, without mechanical structures.
And of course, you are, your outflow from the detention basin does go into the natural wetland, so that'll help, that's the big thing.
Just quickly, looking at the Environmental Commission report, I think you addressed everything in there, but they make an interesting point, that actually, I was telling this to seal, even before I read it. Is there any consideration for solar on the site, either on the building rooftops or on the parking lot, or anything like that? You've got a great expanse for saving some money.
John can deal with that.
Yeah, what we do unprompted is we reinforce the steel on the whole roof, so that it can take solar, so this way it's ready for, you know, tenants that would want to use solar. So we do that from a proactive perspective.
That's good. I hope they do.
Parking lots also provide a good spot for the solar, for the overhead panels.
Yeah, no, they certainly do, but we also had quite a bit of roof area, so we found that typically the roof area serves that, and then you don't have something that you see in a parking lot. It serves the purpose, and yet it's concealed, so we do do that with the roofs.
Okay. I feel bad for your architect, because first of all, I accidentally insulted him, and then we've cut into his time, so why don't we...
Actually, Mr. Chairman, one last, Mr. Chairman, one last thing. Did you go over Carl Hauck's report?
We, I have not received a report from...
Sort of an added sheet.
I've never received it, if somebody can provide it to me. The issue of the paving of Randolph Road, which is the first we've seen this, we could start the project with only one driveway, but I think there have been instances previously where there are ways that we can access Randolph Road and then restore it with certain conditions by reusing materials, and I defer to Carl, because he's done this before, but there are ways that we can, if we need to open those driveways up, do it, and protect the integrity of the repaving of the road, and if that needs to be done, we will do it. But Carl can...
Discuss it, if you agree, but it's just the comment, just because it's an...
Yeah, okay, we'll work all of that out with you. We will comply with his report.
And what about the county planning department? Was there anything in their report that you need to bring to the board's attention?
No. They can talk about it.
Okay, thank you.
Well, what do you want? I mean, with the DNR canal and the county reports, you generally don't go into those because it's between the DNR canal and the county.
And that's why I worded it the way I did, was there anything they want to bring to your attention? Is there anything in here that might affect the site plan?
Let's, let's, all right. Since we've been talking about traffic and road, we'll make the architect wait a little longer. And we flew him in for Chicago for this, too, you know. Nick, can you be sworn? Can you say your full name for the record, please?
Nicholas Verderese, V E R D E R E S E.
Thank you. Mr. Verder, do you swear a firm that the testimony about the given proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so be God?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
And you are a licensed engineer of the state of New Jersey with a specialty in traffic?
Yes, I am.
And you're employed by Dynamic?
Yes, I'm principal founder of Dynamic Traffic.
Okay. And you prepared a rather extensive report on March twenty-third, two thousand eighteen, which was submitted as part of our plan set?
Yes.
Okay. I'm not going to take you, can you just basically review this site, traffic impacts, very quickly?
So as the chairman mentioned, I'm going to touch first on the review letter, so comments thirty, thirty-one, and thirty-two relate to traffic circulation, et cetera. The first comment was where they, the engineer had just noted... The first comment was where they, the engineer had just noted that we made a recommendation to the county to retime the intersection. So essentially, to mitigate some of the impact from the project, to modify the operation of the intersection. Additionally, as part of our county approval, we have a contribution that's required of what they call a fair share contribution. And that will be made in the thirty-five thousand dollar range is what the calculation is for that. And that goes along making improvements to county roadway facilities. The second comment, comment thirty-one, was related to parking. There was a lot of discussion as to why we have more parking than ordinance requires. Just to summarize, it's a spec building, so we don't know exactly which tenants, so we want to be flexible. This specific operator is well-known in the industry, so we're comfortable with his recommendations on the number of spaces. And lastly, we don't want to have to come back to the board down the road to add parking to the site. So we want to make sure we're covering what we think may be a maximum parking demand for users that essentially, we don't know who they are at this point. Then that'll take me a little bit in. I'm not going to go through the whole traffic study. I'm going to try to just touch on a lot of the questions. Mr. Thomas asked some questions about trip generation related to parking spaces. So yes, while our trip generation isn't that high as far as how many peak hour trips we have, what happens in these types of facilities? You have shift work that a lot of times doesn't coincide with the peak of the roadway. So you have shifts that start maybe at seven o'clock, where the peak hours are at seven-thirty or eight o'clock in the morning. Also, you have shift overlap that you want to accommodate with the extra parking spaces. So when you have shifts that, you know, the afternoon shift, the morning shift is leaving, the afternoon shift is coming, you want to make sure you accommodate that, that doubling essentially of vehicles that need to park at that time period. What a lot of users of these types of facilities also do is they stagger start times. So on top of shift work, they'll stagger. So a lot of times you'll have just shift, you know, seven to three, three to eleven, eleven to seven shifts. You'll get a six-thirty shift that starts and maybe a seven-thirty shift that starts. So you don't get all of those people coming. So if you had, say, five hundred vehicles that all came in the morning, they wouldn't all come in that same hour. Someone would come maybe a half hour earlier, a half hour later. You have three different buildings, you're going to have different tenants. So they may have eight o'clock starts, someone may have a six-thirty start. So you kind of mesh that through like three hours in the morning. So you are maybe getting five hundred people coming in the morning, but it spreads to maybe a hundred and fifty to two hundred during each of the hours in the morning time period.
So, so let me just interrupt you. So you're sort of basing everything you're saying on, is it just like the traffic manual bible that the traffic engineers use? Or is it somewhat related to your client's experience with similar facilities?
We use the traffic, what you refer to as bible, the trip generation manual. Yes, we use that because there's a lot of data there. There's, I've been involved, my previous firms have done a lot of those traffic counts to identify that. So we're very comfortable with that type of trip generation for these users. It's usually, you know, big box warehouse, it's mostly automated type stuff going on, and as well as what happens with the shifts, et cetera, as I mentioned. And as we, everyone was mentioning earlier, the previous user was flex based. So there was a lot more office, a lot more in and out going on throughout the day, specifically during the peak hour. We're less than half of the traffic generation of what a smaller seven hundred fifty thousand square foot of the smaller boxes generates typically. Again, we're comfortable with the trip generation we've projected. We've done analysis of the driveways, analysis at the traffic signal. As I noted, we did have some mitigation recommendations for the county, and they agreed to it. So they'll be making that change. I'm not going to talk about onsite circulation. I think Rob has touched on all of that. If there's anything specific that you'd like to discuss? Oh, actually, there was one thing. Mr. Brown had two comments. One was about midday. We've studied so much of these, midday traffic is so nominal compared to what happens during the peak hours. And generally, midday traffic is lighter just on the adjacent roadways. So we don't even study midday. It's, it's not even a time period that would have any, we would have any significant impact to. As far as cut through traffic, two reasons. One, it would be very circuitous to get through this site, to get from Western Canal to Randolph or vice versa. But, but interestingly, just based on how the site lays out, how this intersection lays out and the adjacent roadways, you have little traffic that actually drives up Randolph Road and turns left. In the peak hour, about twenty-five vehicles do it versus three to four hundred people making the right turn. The same in the reverse. You only have about twenty to twenty-five vehicles that make a right turn because I don't know every road, but there must be another good way to come down, maybe Schoolhouse to get down to this area, and you wouldn't come up Western Canal and then come back down Randolph. People just aren't doing it. So I don't, I don't see an issue with vehicles looking to cut through the site.
And I would assume that most, if not all, of the truck traffic exiting the site, you know, would be turning, making that right to go to two eighty-seven.
Yeah, the vast majority would go that way, yes.
Do you make any, in light of what you just said, did you make any recommendations to the county as they, as those trucks make the right turn from Randolph on the Western Canal Road, where they might reconsider relining Western Road toward two eighty-seven? Because people have actually made an unofficial double lane there, where people making the right turn to go on Campus Drive or whatever it is, or a right turn to go at two eighty-seven south, stay on the shoulder, and everybody else passes on the left to get past the first light to go to two eighty-seven north. And maybe it's time then, the county should look at that and at least tell it like it is. Reline those two lanes. And I think it would be maybe more needed with this volume of traffic that becoming. I mean, did you look at that surrounding area like that?
I did not, again, because of the traffic volumes that we're projecting in that area. The county wasn't asking us to look in that direction at any of our impacts. That may be something your township engineer may want to bring up.
I wish somebody would, because it took the county five years after they were asked to put a second stoplight there so that could be a viable interchange.
I regularly am discussing traffic items with the county traffic engineer, so I can, you know, informally make that suggestion to her, you know.
Especially important with truck traffic because they, they get in the land, they get in the shoulder, but they're too wide for the shoulder. But that doesn't stop people from passing, and your, your client's going to be adding to that.
I can definitely bring it up to them. I can't say what their, you know, what their resulting improvement may be.
Starts by bringing it up.
Yes, I will make it them aware of your concern.
Any, any questions for the chairman? Okay, maybe at long last.
Mr. Michael Baumstark. Mr. Baumstark, would you please just spell your name for the record?
Sure, it's B A U M S T A R K.
You swear that the testimony that you're about to give is matter will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do, yes.
Baumstark, you're employed by Cornerstone Architects Limited?
Yes, I'm a principal there.
Okay, and are you a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey?
Yes.
Then he's accepted as a witness.
You have an exhibit that we need to mark as A five, I believe, Mr. Vignello, is that correct?
Yes.
I do have a color rendering of that, along with, Mr. Baumstark, you prepared basically all of the elevations in color, which are part of the plan set. Is that correct?
Yes.
In total, those are six sheets?
Correct.
Okay, I will, again, as I've done with the others, I will give them to Mr. Healy. Then Mr. Hauck, and he can pass them down. It would be easier for the board members to follow your brief testimony.
So A five consists of six separate sheets?
Okay.
Yeah. And A five is just basically a corner rendering of the facility. I'm just going to go quickly through. Just going to go quickly through the construction type of the buildings. All three buildings will be precast concrete construction wall. The steel structure will be basically steel columns, steel beams with joists, with a metal roof deck and insulation on top, and then on top of that will be a TPO roof. All our corner features, which are those office components at all the corners that we've been talking about, will be highlighted with a little bit higher precast there. We'll have glass corner features with some canopies, and then some punch windows for office potential lookouts. All four sides will have clear story windows to bring natural light into the facilities. The dock sides and all the man doors, those will all be insulated doors. We use four colors for the facility. There'll be three kind of gray and white type colors as the base building colors, and then we'll accent throughout the buildings with a blue color to kind of give it some character.
And, and I don't know if you were the one who attended the meetings with the Delaware Canal, but you know that this project is under their jurisdiction, and they have reviewed these buildings and have approved the design of those buildings, is that correct?
Correct.
So by the time it gets down to the end, I will have finished his testimony, but. And again, just for the record, these buildings have solar capabilities if any of the users need it.
Yes, that'll be designed in so that it can be.
And again, just the band along the building sides, those are windows?
Yeah, so, so, so in this blue band will be, that's all paint. But in there, there'll be clear story windows, you know, every fifty feet or so.
To provide light within the.
Natural light into the facility.
Okay. Now that the board members have received all of the exhibits, I have no further questions of this witness, but if the board does, we'd be happy to provide answers.
I'm happy there are not just four boxes. I think you actually have some variation. I think you did a good job on that part, this part of it.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like a fool. I mean, I, I, I really have to, I mean, I guess.
Retract your statement.
Yeah.
Please have style.
I guess, I guess you can do something with a warehouse. It looks, it looks really good.
Thank you.
Very good job.
I think that goes a long way to mitigating the Randolph Road frontage.
And again, we've done everything to move those buildings as far back from Randolph Road that we can as opposed to what's across the street. So they will not be as, although they're large, they will not be as intimidating or imposing on vehicles traveling along Randolph.
Have we ever gotten windows in a warehouse before?
You know, I noticed one thing, you know, you mentioned you were not going to have the berm on Randolph Road now because you eliminate that variance and you'll just have the landscaping, right? So it won't be a berm. But I do notice on your profile from the DNR canal, and it was in one of the exhibits you gave us, but you didn't testify. It seems to me the point that's being made is, is the site elevation from where the canal is to where the building is, is fairly, exhibit A three is fairly steep.
Hi, there is, and actually, we didn't spend a lot of time on that. That was reviewed by the Canal Commission and was reviewed last night at historic, but if you want to.
No, I mean, I just, you don't have to say anything about it. I'm just saying, it seems that, and I'm sure, having been at Canal Commission meetings before, if they had an issue with it, they would have told you, but it seems that that's.
I think Rob can just spend thirty seconds just pointing out, what we pointed out to historic last night about the visibility of these buildings from either passing motorists on on Western Canal Road or people walking on the tow path.
Yeah, so again, very briefly, A three is a sight line from the canal tow path through to the nearest point of facility three. So looking at A two, that's a sight line that runs, again, through this nearest point. And you can see, the intent of the exhibit is for the canal and for the stark commission and for this board to show that at the nearest point, there is not only distance separation, we're greater than the two hundred feet required by the canal from their park, but also the elevation change is mitigated by the existing mature trees there that the sight line runs through really the center and the densest portion of the tree stand that exists not only between the canal and the road, but from the road onto the site that is to remain so that the top of the building is obscured by that tree stand or those multiple layers of trees that exist today.
So that although the board may have found the building to be very attractive, if you were along the canal or on Western Canal Road, you're not going to see it?
That's correct. And that is the.
If we were at a rock concert, that'd be a good noise, I guess.
I think, that last comment again, that will conclude my presentation. I have no witnesses. I would like to just briefly deal on one issue that's came up earlier so that we just have clarity, which is that one house that is property. I think what probably is the most appropriate thing to do, in order for us to demolish either of those houses, we do have to go to historic. We have to fill out an application. During the break, I spoke to my client, and even that house is in pretty bad shape. My guess is they will have no value. If there is any historic significance, as may be determined by the historic commission, or do whatever we can to serve the house, if they have no historic, probably is better off to. Other than that, I think we, we beat the variances to death. We've eliminated now the frontage variance. The other variances are de minimis in nature and I think are an enhancement to the project. I would respectfully request that the board grant the site plan approval with. I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thanks, Pierre. Any other questions before we open? Okay.
Move to open to the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone in the public here that's not seemingly associated with the applicant? Who would like to speak on this application?
Being no one.
I brought reinforcements.
Being no one coming forward, I would move that the public hearing on this application be closed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we'll entertain a.
I'll move to approve the application with all the conditions that were mentioned. I don't know.
No, it'll be in the, it'll be in the.
Be in the resolution.
It'll be in the resolution in the minutes. But yeah, I mean, all the conditions, I think we talked about trees and everything else.
They were numerous, yes.
But there were numerous ones, but I, it'll be covered. And.
And just to, just to clarify the variances too.
With the removal of the one variance with, of the setback.
Yeah, so the fifty-foot parking lot setback was eliminated impervious. Instead of sixty-point-four because of the different site amendments, it's sixty-point-five.
Yes.
They're asking for the parking, parking area or parking travel lane in order to provide a better buffer from twenty-six down to twenty-four.
Or, yes.
The landscaping, they had mentioned, they had proposed two ninety-nine originally. They're going to add trees along the employee parking areas at the building ends and otherwise where the trees would survive.
And possible planting in the detention basin, which would be under your review.
Yeah, and I heard a figure of at least one hundred and thirty, but I think that was even before some of these additional areas. The driveway width and the number of driveways, those are the.
Yes. Yes.
Second, if nobody did. There, there is one other thing. Going back to, I guess, the southerly house, because I don't think it's, I, I think the northerly house is just so changed and probably, as I say, is not the original one, but the southerly house, would you mind photographing it? I, I realize the ultimate thing will be up to the historic commission, but in the, in the absence of anything else, would you mind photographing it?
Now, we, actually, quite frankly, in order to demolish, we have to apply to the historic and part of the requirement is to provide photographs to the historic commission. So we will, we will go through the appropriate channels with all of the documentation as to both houses, so that we can either demolish them or if there is a reason to preserve them, we will do what we need to do to preserve them.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have a motion? We have a second?
Second.
Yeah, yeah. Well, Bob, Bob already, Bob, Tom has already ended, but, okay.
Carl Hauck?
Yes.
Seale MacGyver?
Yes.
Robert Mettler?
Yes.
Charles Brown?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
I think it's a good project, yes.
Godwin Amalola?
Yes.
And Chairman Rascini?
Yes.
Thank you very much. And with the tax dollars, maybe we can get a better sound system.
You can't volunteer.
Do we have any other business tonight?
Nope.
Okay.
Just a reminder, we have meetings.
Meeting on, what's today, the sixth, so we have a meeting on the 20th? Okay. Next meeting is on the 20th. Motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
All in favor?
Yes.